We're going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Do you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Mrs. Claypool?
Here.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
You rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
We've added one report from the superintendent.
Okay, very good.
So if we can have a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Where's the re- oh, 3.01.
It's next, yeah, number three. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Ms. Leavenworth, it's your turn now. Yes?
Now say it.
Say it now.
Yeah, coach me, will you?
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the last addition to this agenda. This morning at 10 o'clock, the Ohio Board of Education, the Department of Education, released this year's Ohio School Report Cards. And really, I'm just the bearer of all the good news tonight. So, West Yaga remains one of the top performers in the state of Ohio and rank order, we're the 11th school district out of 607 school districts in the state. We are one of 10 school districts, only 10 school districts, that were rated a cumulative five-star rating alongside a five-star rating in each component category. This has been, you know, the culmination of so much work and effort of our children. You know, we have great students, we have wonderful families, and I think it's the recipe with great teaching of this high achievement. And so, we obviously are incredibly proud of the efforts of everyone in our community. We can't do it without the support of our board, we can't do it without the support of our community. So we want to say a thank you to our board, we want to say a thank you to our staff, to our students, to our families. It is really great news and it just, sometimes in the world of education, you need the ability to say, gosh, all this hard work is really paying off. So it's wonderful news, we're so proud, I'm so, so proud, proud of this administrative team leading the charge. So I just, you'll have to hear about it ad nauseam because I'm just giving you the 100-foot view, but Dr. Amy Davis and Megan Bellin will be giving you the granular report among your Z's next board meeting when we can have some time to really look at the insides and outsides. So we'll give you a full report, look at all the components, areas of strength, which are many, and always some areas for work. You know, we're pretty competitive, we want to be in the top 10, so 11 is great, but, you know, always pushing ahead. So, really high achievement this year, congratulations to all and thank you for your support. The high school, yes, Kathy, you can point out the specifics, I'm sorry, Ryan's not here, who would crow himself, but it looks as if West Yaga High School is the second greatest top performer high school in the state of Ohio, number two. So, if we were holding a foam finger up, we're number two, we're number two, I guess.
Which is nice because of the peace sign.
Very, very much so, yes.
I think it's super important to notice, sorry Pam, go ahead, too, that this isn't just about tests, this is about the whole child, that what we're working on and what our kids are working so diligently on, what our staff is working so diligently on is the fact that they can perform myriad tasks and do it well because they have been given strong foundational skills, and I think that's what it assesses. So this is not just a testing thing, this is a, they are, they're walking out ready to tackle the world thing, so that's amazing.
Which is like the five stars, right?
Yes.
Then with the five stars and five stars deep.
Yes.
Pretty commendable. I also think in light of the recent national news on education, it's even more spectacular that we, we're very fortunate in this community.
Yeah, on top of that, Pam's mentioning is the national news saying that the school, students have gone down in science and math and reading.
And reading, all three.
I think that a lot of our success and continued success in that is because we were able to stay open during COVID and that closing of schools during COVID has reflected in those, the lowering. So, kudos again to our administrators and to their staff for staying open and keeping kids in school and allowing them to continue their education in spite of the pandemic.
Congratulations to our students, too.
Yes, yeah. Sure, and of course, such a high achievement is the result of relationships, we know this, you know, first you have to take care of the child, make sure they're safe, happy, healthy, and through those relationships then you can really build the foundational skills that lead to this high achievement. So, you know, we're proud because it says that we're doing lots of things right, so thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Yeah, another comment I'd make is that this doesn't happen overnight. It sustained work for 10 years.
Yeah, well, and this is four years of being, you know, third.
I was going to say it's four or five years now, right? It's five, five years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome.
Pretty amazing.
So, lots of work went into that, so we're grateful to our kids and grateful to our adults that are supporting them, so, thanks.
There are no public remarks, so we can move on to routine items.
Resolution 350 to approve routine matters of the West Yaga Local Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Financial Resolution 351 to approve the warrants for August 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 352 to accept donations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 353 to approve the transfer of funds.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think this is our annual transfer from the general fund to the PI fund and the termination benefit fund as we build up that reserve. The check for the terminations were sent out this week as well, so you'll see that.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Benincasa?
Thank you. Resolution 354 is a resolution to approve additional per diem for certified staff in the 25-26 school year.
So moved, second. Any discussion?
Just in general, what kind of an increase is this? Is this about the dollars, the per diem, right, not the days?
Correct, and this is for nighttime responsibilities for our counselors, which go above and beyond the contractual days.
Is it like a 3% like, yeah, okay, thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 355 is a resolution to approve change in certified contract, certified salary movement for the 25-26 school year.
So moved, second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 356 is a resolution to approve classified staff appointments for the 25-26 school year.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 357 is a resolution to approve change in classified staff contracts for the 25-26 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 358 is a resolution to approve revised classified contracts, pardon me, for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this because you get the routes figured out and then fix the, got it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And we don't set the van routes until we have those set, so the buses are set at 6:00 going forward, but the van routes, we don't set those yet.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 359 is a resolution to approve additional transportation route assignments for the 25-26 school year.
So moved. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 360 is a resolution to accept classified staff resignations.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Is there concern that they're all Westwood or is this dealt by?
There is great concern, Pam, that they're all Westwood. Actually, a lot of this has to do with utilizing proctors as van drivers as proctors and vice versa, so when transportation needs, sometimes trump the proctoring, but that is why you just approved two new proctors at Westwood. So, we're lucky this year, they're difficult spots at times to fill because of the succinct nature, they're, you know, three hours in length every day, so they're sometimes are hard to find.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 361 is a resolution to approve unpaid days.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 362 is a resolution to approve supplemental contracts for the 25-26 school year.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 363 is a resolution to approve service contracts for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is for 24-25 rather than 25-26?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Paperwork, Dr. Beers.
Okay.
This is paperwork issue that is being resolved tonight.
Call the roll.
So he can be paid.
Well, yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Can I, can I just go back to the previous one, say, it was just saying first mentee, does some of these just have more than one?
Occasionally due to the nature of the training required to mentor based in resident educator status, sometimes a teacher will take on more than one mentor and contractually, we pay one amount for a first mentee and a secondary smaller amount for a second mentee.
That's not overtaxing, I mean, they can handle doing?
These are crafty veterans, yes, so sometimes they take on more than one because it just makes it more simplistic, especially if they're in the same state of their licensure, they're working on the same kind of thing, so, just dependent upon the teacher. No, that's okay, good question.
Resolution 364, resolution to approve service contracts for the 25-26 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a question on the cheerleader, two advisors, both for winter, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that they both, I'll have to ask, I'll have to find that out, Pam, I believe that there have been two in the past in the winter months, and I don't know if there's a reason.
Is one JV and one varsity?
Probably, but we have quite a lot of number in terms of our number of supervision, so I'm wondering if that's why, but I'll have to find that out for you.
Thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 365 is a resolution to authorize the award of service contracts for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 366 is to approve a student practicum placement for the 25-26 school year.
So moved, second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 367 is a resolution to declare emergency circumstances and update board policy on the first and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
This is specifically for the two policies that are mentioned in the resolution and not for any others.
Yes, the reason for the first and final reading is because House Bill 96 was passed after our last board meeting, so we have to do it a first and final reading for these two policies to be in effect, to go live, if you will, but that's why, it's because that's after the legislature.
So then on the policy 8305 on the co-op, we talked, so, as this, it says the superintendent shall conduct an assessment of risk related to the access and the security, you know, of the data, information collected and retained by the district, and I think that shall conduct at least annually, and so we agreed that what we would do is put in the actual co-op policy, that it would then be reviewed and shared with the board.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that that's a piece of our policy.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 368 is that resolution to approve the first and final reading of the revised board policies, 8300 and 8305.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 369 is a resolution to approve the first reading of new policies 0165, 0166, 7540.09, revised policies 0100, 0142.1, 0151, 0152, 0155, 0163, 0164, 0167.2, 1100.01, 1520, 4120.08, 4121, 7530.01, 7530.02, 7530.03, 7540.03, 7540.04, 8310, 8315, 9160, and rescinded policies 0165.1, 0165.2, and 0173.
So moved.
Thanks, everybody, thank you all.
Second.
Any discussion?
Maybe we should just point out that the process is for a first reading, at which point then we have option to work with the administration to get changes and to clarify with it, we know what, what's going on in the policies.
Yes.
This is not putting them into effect, this is just getting them on the table so we can work on them.
Yes, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 370 is a resolution to approve anti-skid agreement between Chester Township and the West Yaga School District.
So moved, second. Any discussion?
I noticed that's a big increase they gave us.
Yes.
22% on this anti-skid, a big increase from our friends across town.
Yes, it is. And all of you will need to sign that contract tonight before you leave, it's the only one you have to.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 371 is a resolution to approve Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chassis and Body and Transit Fans.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Are we looking at just our normal, what are we looking at, two?
No, we're looking at one bus and two vans this time. As we look at our van inventory, they're aging faster because there's so many trips related to individual student, because that's what we use for taking individual smaller groups, so they're having a little bit more wear and tear. As you recall, we did a spring bus purchase as well, so we bought two in the fall last year and we bought a two in the spring, so we have two more coming, so we thought we could just do one this time.
And when will this get here?
It takes about a year.
That's what I was thinking.
When we ordered in November, we just, we got them in the summer, so it takes about almost a year. And that'll be a nine-person, a nine-passenger van, which is a typical, you know, not a minivan, but the larger van.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 372 is a resolution to approve the inter-district contracts for education services between West Yaga local schools and Berkshire local schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this new? Is this particular program new?
It is new, yes, it is, and it's outside our Excel Tech Career Center, so we're working with individual students here and it's providing them an opportunity they otherwise wouldn't have.
Right, no, it looks like a good program, and do they have to pay for it? How does that work? Does a student have to pay for it?
No, we will pay for it.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Can I go back to that just for?
Sure.
Maybe you should explain what that is, because I think that's a kind of a new program.
Amy, would you like to? Jim is, Jim is. Oh, sorry, I should have gone straight to you, pardon me, go ahead, Mr. Kesch.
Basically, we've given an alternative pathway to our students. Berkshire is eligible for a lot of other grant monies that we're necessarily not eligible for, so they can, they can add some program that's not available to us and to help defer their costs as well as they save us on the backend, we're able to offer this ACE Ford certification diesel mechanic school to these two individual states, and I mean, they've been doing it for whatever, three, four weeks now, and they are in love with it.
That's great, I think.
I'd like to get their full cover, also, they come in showing the dirt on their pants every day and tell me what they did, whether it's changing a brake line or fixing the body of a car, so they're giving a really good education, and one of the kids actually said, you know, you've changed my life, this is putting me on a trajectory and giving me an opportunity that I wouldn't have anyways. Thank you for your support, I know I worked very closely with Amy Nancy and Karen to make that happen, so, thank you.
So is it a part-day kind of program like Excel Tech is?
Yeah, they spend their mornings there where they do an hour of classwork, and then they do about an hour and a half with an individual technician, so they're actually working. If you didn't know, Preston purchased the ODOT, old ODOT facility across from Preston Motors and then donated it to Berkshire, and then is leasing it back from them so they can use the, it's a suite deal, trust me, I'm a John Starrett dude, and our kids are able to work at that facility and then they're refurbishing a lot of the buildings, they're supposed to be in the new building, I believe, in the next two weeks, so, it's a really good opportunity for our kids.
Do we have to provide transportation?
One student drives himself and the other one, you do a lot of transportation, but it's good for where he lives, it's not that far of drive, so, Melvin did a very nice job accommodating, because, as I said, these kids would have a tough go on another path As I said, these kids would, would have a tough go on another path, because they're, they're digged up about school and having to be doing what they're doing.
That's great. And I don't want to steal the thunder from next month's riveting presentation about the Westiaga report card that is coming. But Mr. Kesh will be a part of that, too. And I think, you know, it goes to, to say, Jim's role at the high school certainly has opened up opportunity for individualizing some things that some of our students, I think, otherwise would not have the opportunity to take advantage of. And I think we're seeing individualized, um, opportunities for kids in a way that we haven't before, so we're grateful. Um, you, you're going to hear more about his work on some of the report card measures that are a little bit more, you know, thousand-foot lens. But when you hear about some of the individual students he's working with helping, um, it's pretty amazing work. So we're proud of them and pleased.
This is the first year, so it could expand. I mean, right?
Every day I'm talking to more kids about different opportunities.
I would think. I think that's great.
I work with family, family living. I work with Caves Road Construction, so a lot of, a lot of you.
Just a taste, because we have to keep them coming back for next month.
It's good work, because it's, it's really, it's really life-saving.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks.
No.
Get out.
Good stuff.
Perfect. Are we to resolution three seventy-four? Thank you.
Three seventy-three.
Three seventy-three.
Pardon me. Resolution three seventy-three is a resolution to approve the school affiliation agreement between Westiaga Local Schools and Preston Superstore.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion besides the one we just had? Because this is the other piece to that.
Yes.
That's amazing. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim and Amy, for making that work. Very good. Resolution three seventy-four is a resolution to approve service agreement between ABA Outreach Services and Westiaga School District.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just that, like, I noticed on the contract that it, it was signed by them quite a few months ago, and it's already in place. So is that difficult that we sign or approve after something's already in place? No, this is just because it got delayed somewhere along the line. Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution three seventy-five is a resolution to approve the independent contractor district agreement between Proactive Behavior Services and Westiaga Local Schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution three seventy-six is a board resolution to approve the agreement with Huntington Bank for deposit of public funds to the Westiaga Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution three seventy-seven is a board resolution to approve Cafe three oh six proposed price list for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Oh, that's me. Um, okay, we have, um, discussion of old business and suggestions to be included on the future agenda. Um, we do need to reschedule our November seventeenth meeting to November tenth because of OSBA. We tried to not do it like that, and then they changed the date of the, where it normally falls. So we are just moving that. So if you all could just note that on your calendars, that would be great. Other than that, I don't, I don't know of anything else that needs to be discussed. Does anyone have anything that needs to come back?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Dr. Ben Nacasa, superintendent report?
Well, not to be outdone, I have more good news. So talk about achievement. Our kids are achieving everywhere they go, so I just wanted to make you aware that we had a student compete in the Shining Star Competition down at Playhouse Square, um, representing Westiaga. She went as an alternate and performed onstage as a part of, uh, the KeyBank Shining Star Competition. She is a beautifully talented young lady, Charlotte Spire. And so I've, I'm hoping I can, um, entice her to come to the board meeting so that you can see for yourself, and we can watch a little clip of her performance, because she is, um, a stunning performer. So we're thrilled that she represented Westiaga so well with her grace and her talent in September. We had a Wolverine kickoff classic. You might remember that I, um, told you about that bef, at our last board meeting. It was upcoming. We had, I think, about around four hundred people in attendance to that. I told Don Ben Nacasa, oh, it'll be, you know, quick. It's probably not going to be that many people. We'll eat at the food trucks. Oh, no, to all of those things. Um, Don was like, what is going on? There were lots of people here. It was such a wonderful evening to, um, celebrate our fall athletes and, um, have the community come together. Each of our fall sports teams put on a game for kids, um, from face painting. There was putt-putt from our golf team, um, that we failed in. And, um, many things for young children to take advantage of and have fun with. And then we celebrated them by announcing each of the sports team and getting a little preview for the season to come.